May 26. Our invocation today is by Commissioner DeYoung, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the invocation and the pledge.
Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, as yesterday, we've reflected on the Memorial Day weekend and remembering all those men and women who in the past have given their lives for this great country that we could have these meetings here today. And Father, we also want to remember the men and women currently serving our nation, that again, we can have this opportunity to gather. Lord, we ask you to protect them. And Lord, we pray protection on our first responders, our firefighters, our police officers. Lord, be with them every single day that they're working. Father, we ask a blessing upon this meeting today. Lord, we ask that you be with the decisions we make on behalf of the residents of Ottawa County. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Justin, would you start us off, please? Thank you. Justin, would you give us a roll call, please?
Can't hear Justin.
We're not hearing Justin.
All right, guys. Is that better?
Yeah.
Much better.
Mr. Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Zylestra.
Here.
Mr. Danenburg.
Here.
Mr. Mepelink.
Here.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Here.
Mr. Holtbauer.
Present.
Mr. DeYoung.
Here.
Mr. Kires.
Here.
Mr. Bergman.
Here.
And Mr. Fenske.
Here.
There we have a quorum.
Thank you. Presentation of petitions, communications?
None from us.
Okay. Public comment and communication from county staff. This is a time that public and to give any comments or any thoughts that they might have. Please limit your your comments to three minutes and give us your name and address, please.
There's, we don't see anyone on the public.
No public comments?
No.
All right. Communication from county staff?
Looks like there is one.
Hey, everyone. It's Nick Bonstall here from Ottawa County Emergency Management. Just wanted to give everyone a brief update of activities over the last few weeks. As you guys know, we've been responding and coordinating with the COVID-19 pandemic here in Ottawa County. At the same time, dealing with pretty, pretty large amounts of rainfall, inland flooding, now some river flooding, and still lake shore erosion all at the same time. So as we work through those issues, I just want to bring up a few points of where we've been and kind of where where we're looking to go. With the pandemic side of response, things are, things are really starting to shape up pretty nicely. We're really working on solidifying logistics and PPE and making sure that, you know, if there is some sort of second wave, that we are more prepared this time than we were on the previous go around. And I think you're going to see that from a lot of government agencies of, we're going to take those lessons that we've learned and really apply them for the future if something does happen. Along with that, we are doing a distribution day this Friday. So far, we've been able to work with about 57 different government nonprofit agencies in order to get them the PPE they need. We've handed out thousands, thousands of masks and gloves and all the good stuff that we need to respond to the crisis. Along with that, we've worked side by side with Ottawa County Department of Public Health in planning for different public health related plans. So everything from quarantine and isolation plans to, you know, small sheltering operations. You know, we really put a lot of time and effort into that. So really been proud of the work that we've done there with Ottawa County Department of Public Health. And look forward to continuing that as we move forward. One thing I want to bring up is both on the COVID-19 pandemic response and on the flood response, is a very bright light on our volunteer operations here within Ottawa County. And we have about 105 credentialed, you know, trained, certified, background checked volunteers that we put out into the community. And they have done everything from warehouse distribution, PPE distribution, sandbagging, damage assessment, handing out cleanup kits. They've just done a phenomenal job. So I really want to make sure that everyone understands that they really are filling a gap from where other agencies may have not been able to step up. They have stepped up huge here within the county. Along with flooding, how, as you guys know, we've had over 11 inches of rain in a two week period of time. And it really hit the northwest quadrant of the county rather hard. And really, if you look at county to county, Muskegon County took the brunt of the, the rainfall amounts and the brunt of the damage. So as of Sunday, I just want to say thanks to Joe Bush and the Water Resources Commissioner, that office. I can't tell you how many hours and how many emergency pumps they have done throughout the course of the week. Now, we, they've, they've done a lot of emergency work and we're very thankful for that. We still have some small issues that are going on within the county, where there's maybe water in low lying areas that we really don't really know how we're going to get rid of it, other than obviously just evaporation and the groundwater going down. Kind of fighting Mother Nature on that for sure. We've assessed over 400 structures. We've done damage assessment, physical damage assessment in about 41 of those. And we did not seek an extension on the state of emergency for the flooding. We probably will not meet the threshold and criteria for SBA assistance. The bright side is that we're connected to Muskegon County. And if Muskegon County ends up recording enough damage to qualify for that assistance, it'll make our citizens become available for that assistance as well, being a connected county. So we have one more shot there and then it's looking good for Muskegon County. I think they, they may have a better shot at reaching those thresholds. So overall, just handing out cleanup kits and getting people back up on their feet for sure. And it's been a long week. Tomorrow, we will do another flyover assessment of our lake shore with the Michigan State Police and use that data for the future as well. So just want to give everyone a brief update and I'll open it up to any questions.
Nick. Questions? Nick, Commissioner Danenburg.
Yes, sir.
You said there's a threshold of money that we got to have damage. What is that threshold?
Yeah, so it's not necessarily money. The threshold is an amount of homes. So what we have to have is there's four damage assessment categories. There's impacted, minor, major, and destroyed. And there's different criterias that go into each one of those categories. We have to have at least 25 homes that are major or destroyed. And they have to be destroyed and major over 40% of their overall home value. So we have to have 25 of those. Right now, we're at 10. So we're really not going to even come close to that 25 threshold in order to meet that SBA assistance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else question for Nick? If not, Nick, thanks for the, the work that you and your staff and, and Lisa and her staff have done a phenomenal job. Listening in on some of your updates. Just, it's, it's been, it's been wonderful to listen to all the people that have come around you to help within the county. And so thanks for the work you do.
Thank you, guys, for the support. Appreciate it.
Okay. Did I notice that there was another public comment that wanted to come in?
Yep. Lanay would like to speak and we are unmuting her now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Hear me? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, great. Hi, Lanay Monera. I live at 6722 Pierce Street in Allendale. My statement today is going to get personal, which is not something I like to do in a public forum. But I grew up in Ottawa County and I attended North London Christian Reformed Church almost my entire life. Some of you guys probably are familiar with North London, corner of 72nd Avenue and Taylor Street. Anyway, my husband and I were married in North London. Our three kids were baptized there. We're still members of North London. My husband was a cadet counselor for years, a deacon. We were youth group leaders. Now, I'm not saying that for a pat on the back and you're probably wondering where I'm going with, with that. But my husband was born and raised in a different country. He came to the US when he was 15. So I raise that because my husband, obviously, he's not Caucasian. He's not white. North London, for you guys who are familiar with North London, know that it's a very conservative church. It's in a very conservative part of Ottawa County. Yet my husband has always been accepted and embraced by our conservative community and our conservative church. I share this personal story again, which is not my thing typically, but I share it to challenge the initial narrative or the official narrative that I have been seeing coming out of Ottawa County in the last couple of years. I'm hearing it's a narrative that Ottawa County is a narrow minded place where people are implicitly biased and don't even realize it. Now, do I think racism exists in Ottawa County? Of course. Is it as pervasive as certain people and companies want this board to believe? I humbly submit it's not. And I would cite my husband as an example. I also want to challenge the board just to think about where the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives will lead. In particular, I want to highlight the advocacy of transgenderism. I say advocacy because I looked to that November 2019 forum that featured a transgender neuropsychologist as one of the keynote speakers. Now, please don't misinterpret my statements as hating transgender people. I don't. That's not the purpose of my comment. My concern is what happens when the rights of transgender people conflict with the right to exercise one's religion? And I point to our Christian schools as an example. If Ottawa County moves towards making transgender individuals part of a protected class, like of course racial minorities are part of a protected class, as they should be, because none of us get to choose if we're born white, black, or brown. But what happens if a Christian school teacher, say, Mr. Jones, who might be teaching at Genesee Christian or Borkilo Christian Transitions to Ms. Jones? Will Christian schools be able to exercise their religious beliefs? Or will the transgender teacher continue to be allowed to teach at a Christian school?
Sorry, thank you, ma'am. The three minute time is, is just expired.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask one question where I would find the recordings? Because I think these are recorded.
Can you give her that answer, Justin? Thank you, Lanay.
The clerk's office is responsible for the minutes of the meeting. So we would have to, I'm happy to connect with the IT department to find whether or not a recording exists. But the clerk's office takes the minutes of every board meeting.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll contact you later than Justin. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Chairman, we have Darrell from Public Health that would like to say a few words. Go ahead, Darrell.
All right.
Hey, thank you, John, and good afternoon, commissioners. Would one of you just copy that? You can hear me, okay?
We can hear you. Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. My name is Darrell Glasshaw. I'm the Senior Epidemiologist for Ottawa County. I'm standing in for Lisa Stefanovsky, the Health Officer. Just to give a brief overview of our COVID-19 response and the efforts of the Ottawa County Department of Public Health. Overall, we've had close to 800 cases of COVID-19 in Ottawa County. I would say if you're interested in any of the data or information that we've collected and have been posting publicly, please check out our website. We have that available in both English and in Spanish. It has a lot of detail about who's affected and where they're affected. And you can check it out at your leisure. We've had about 33 deaths in Ottawa County. This is 33 too many, but still definitely lower than the case fatality rate for Michigan and about equivalent or a little bit lower than the United States. So overall, there's a lot of positive information in the data that we're seeing. Also, the number of cases that have been coming in each day over the last week or two has flattened out a little bit. We haven't seen the, the continuous climb that we have been seeing for the last six weeks or so. So a lot of encouraging information at the local level. Here in Ottawa County, we're also focusing on populations that may be more affected. If you look at the information that we have, you see that Hispanic and Latino population is being affected probably close to four times their proportion of the population. So we continue to do outreach to migrant camps and farmers. We do Spanish radio interviews to make sure that there's the most pertinent education available out there. And then, like I mentioned, our dashboard is also in Spanish, all in an effort to make sure that we're reaching out to an affected population, but also ensuring that there's equity and availability of the appropriate information. Over the next week or so, there's going to be a little bit more testing in Ottawa County. There's been a push and a partnership with our state partners to test some higher risk settings. So we may be getting a few more positive cases out of, out of those settings. So stay tuned for more information out of that. And overall, in Ottawa County, testing has generally increased each week. This is really good information. If you see our dashboard, you can see the trend going up from mid-March, when all this kind of started, to most recently, when we had a close to 2,800 tests run in a week. That data should be updated again in the next business day or two. And hopefully, that trend continues because if we can test, the more people we can test, the more we can find, the more we can do case investigation and contact investigations. And if we know where the cases are, we can do something about it. So that's kind of the takeaways from public health. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to field those as well.
Yeah, Darrell, I just want to say thank you for all your work and Lisa as well, obviously. And thanks for the work on the Spanish translations and Spanish outreach, Spanish language outreach. I think it's really important here in Holland, especially. We've seen, like you said, a lot of cases in southwest Ottawa and in Hispanic communities. I'm making sure that, you know, folks in that community know what's going on and have, you know, been reached by your department is great. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Astra.
Roger, I do have a couple of questions. As, as we continue to open up the county, right, a little bit more understand that there's more testing happening. Are we looking at having specialized sites where people can go and get testing? Or will they be able to go to their local doctor and find, and get a test there?
I think that's a good question. Across the community, we've seen access to testing increase. And all three of our larger healthcare systems have been fantastic partners and standing up the resources that the community has needed. There are also three screening hotlines that people can call to, you know, learn more if they're eligible for screening. I think that if there was places and times where we would do, you know, community outreach and be in situations where like a population is uniquely and highly affected. There are some other places across the state that have done targeted testing or opened up testing sites. But I think right now in Ottawa County, most folks should be able to get a test through one of the three healthcare organizations in the county.
Yeah. And I just wondered your thoughts. I know that there's a lot of talk out there as, as to safety precautions and, and opening up the country and opening up the county and so forth. And then with the summer heat, so there's a lot of stories out there. What, what would be your top three precautions that you, that we should be, you know, advocating our, our county residents to apply?
I think that overall, there's one consistent thing with COVID-19 is that things change a lot. We've known about the virus for about six months and recommendations have pretty consistently been updated. So for a time, there wasn't a recommendation for public masking and now there is. If there were, you know, three top recommendations that we make at the Public Health Department for individuals to, to, to take home and apply themselves, it's, it's usually and generally what the, the state Health Department and the governor have been recommending, which is, you know, stay home, stay safe while those recommendations are in place. Wear a mask if you're out in public as recommended. And then also at the individual level, just making sure that you're, you're washing your hands consistently. All good ways to try to prevent the spread of coronavirus. And then as you return to work, a kind of a fourth one or, or one that has to do with more external facing work, is just, you know, follow your, your, your business's guidance for returning to work. You know, help out by participating in daily screening and wear your mask as indicated. And try to, you know, socially distance. These are all ways to prevent COVID-19 and none of us want to see a resurgence. So if we all work together, I think that we can really have an impact on mitigating the spread of COVID-19 and keeping those cases down.
Good, thank you.
So Darrell, a question with the possibility, well, the reality that soon we will see more migrant workers coming in our community to pick strawberries, blueberries, et cetera, et cetera. And they may or may not have healthcare coverage. What, what is being done in terms of providing testing for those individuals that might need it?
Yeah, that's a challenging population to reach for some of the reasons you noted, just being mobile. You know, following the seasons for the different agricultural products across Michigan. And also, you know, sometimes literacy levels, you know, vary. So doing outreach to those populations, you know, has to be targeted and carefully planned. As far as testing goes, that can also be very difficult just because access to care can be harder for that population. And so these are all things that we're thinking about at the Health Department. You know, right now on this call, I don't have a very concrete, specific, you know, plan for how public health is helping to partner with that or how the community is working together. But I can tell you that the public health is working with other organizations to reach out to that community. And one of the things that we continue to make a priority is testing for that population. So stay tuned.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? If not, thank you for being with us today, Darrell.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on. There's nothing else. We can move on to the approval of agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Go move.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments or questions?
Roger, we have to add the two additional ones, right? To the agenda?
Yes. That includes the two additional ones that I'll mention at the beginning. Correct?
Yes.
Correct. All right. All right. So Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Kires.
Yes.
Mr. Holtbauer.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia. Garcia.
He's trying to unmute.
Going to go back.
Yes, yes.
Danenburg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next thing is consent resolutions. Mr. Fenske.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to approve consent resolutions, one through three.
Support.
I'm, I'm going to just say that commissioners need to speak up a little bit more. We're not hearing it real well.
Support.
Okay. All right. I got Jim, but I'm talking about the commissioners that are in the boardroom. We can't hear them real well. So anyway, so we've got that. There's support for it. Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Danenburg.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Holtbauer.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Kires.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Your action items. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the fiscal year 2021 Michigan Department of Corrections Plan and Application, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 Michigan Department of Corrections Plan and Application. For.
It's been moved and supported. I noticed that Mr. Fenske is on that board. Maybe he could just give us a few comments?
Well, we actually have one of our staff members that probably could do a better job if she would like to.
Alma Valenzuela.
Thank you, yes. Alma Valenzuela, the application is a recurring application that we submit to the state of Michigan to provide funding, to provide programming in the community in here in Ottawa County. The main goal of those programs is to reduce the prison population. And we do have a low prison commitment rate compared to other counties in the state. So this program is quite important for the community. Any questions?
Okay, any comments or questions regarding this motion? If not, Justin, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kires.
Yes.
Mr. Holtbauer.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Chirpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Danenburg.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Regarding, regarding the countywide compensation classification study, I make a motion to approve the proposal from Municipal Consulting Services to conduct a countywide compensation and classification study at a cost of $90,750. For.
Been moved and supported. Comments or questions?
I do have a question for Marcie, if she's there by chance. Is Marcie there?
I'm here.
Hi, Marcie. I, I noticed that this is a five-year contract, I believe.
That is correct.
Okay. And, and I think I read that the initial study and recommendations would occur between five and six months.
That is correct. What we are doing is looking at them to do the consulting over the next five years. Okay. And that would start with an initial assessment of the entire organization. So that would be all 330 job descriptions. And that should take approximately six months. So we should finish by the end of the year. And then the consultant would stay on board with us through that five years for any additional support that we needed. So if there was like a single job that needed to be looked at, they would look at that for us. Or if, say, we had organizational change where a department had wanted to look at the structure of the department, they could also perform that service for us as well. I believe that was at about $150 an hour for that consulting work. But they would be our consultant for the next five years.
But that would be on top of the $90,000?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. Reality, so in reality, it's $90,000 for, for six months of work, basically.
For the initial study, that is correct.
Okay.
Marcie, help me explain what this is doing. This is not a wage study. This is a job.
It is a wage study. It is the Waging Classification Study. So in essence, what they would come in and is look at the structure that we have currently. They would go through all 330 job descriptions that we have.
Okay.
We help reformat those if needed. Structurally look at all the different classifications and all the different salary schedules that we have and then make an assessment of what we need to do moving forward.
Would that also be, might be changing their job description of what they're doing for the pay that they're in? Would they also be looking at that?
Yes, they would go through the, they would go through all the job descriptions to start with. Typically, what they'll do is they'll go through the job descriptions. They will meet with department heads. They will meet with the staff to understand what they're doing. And, and then create the new job description. And then from there, they would go in and classify it, looking at what the structure is across all of Ottawa County in different departments, but then also look at what the market is doing at the same time and make an assessment on that. They'll also take a look at our benefits package and say, okay, what percentage of where are we in relation to other entities? In relation to other entities, say Kent County, Alleghen County, on our benefits package. And then they'll put that entire information together, um, usually there also is a a time for people to come forward and and. Say somebody was to get downgraded, they could come in to a committee and have that looked at and whether or not we would change that. But this consultant would help us through that entire process, the last two that we've done, we have done in-house. Um, and at this time, we don't feel like that's the best option, moving forward to do them in-house any longer.
When I was at Me Johnson, we went through that too. And there's quite a few jobs that got downgraded, some got upgraded. And they got upgraded in pay, when they got downgraded, they kept their original pay. Until the raises and everything caught up to that pay.
That's typically what we've done at Ottawa County, and typically, I would say maybe five percent get downgraded.
Right.
It's a small, a much smaller percentage than the ones that get upgraded.
All redlining.
Yeah. So you'd freeze until the pay scale caught up, so they'd stay where they were at and not maybe get, if if you were to do. Say two percent like we've done in the past, every year, we'd wait for it to catch up. Or wait for the steps in the scale to catch up to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Any further questions? Uh, Justin, would you call the roll please?
Sir, Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Zalestra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. De Young.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And finally, regarding the twenty twenty millage rates, I make a motion to authorize the board chairperson and clerk registered to sign the resolution of intent to increase the twenty twenty millage rate for county operations of three point nine zero mils. Emergency nine-one-one of point four-two-eight-eight mils, parks of point three-two-three-three mils. Road commission of point four-eight-seven-three mils and CMH of point two-nine-two-three mils.
Support.
I'm doing support, Al, would you um just comment and explain to uh people that may be watching the public? Why we are raising the uh the millage?
Sure, I'd be happy to, so the language of resolution of intent to increase the twenty twenty millage rate, that's actually included in state statute. Uh, since voters approved the headly amendment to the constitution in nineteen seventy-eight. And uh basically, what happens is uh we have to state that in order to have a public hearing which allows you to keep. Uh, some of the uh inflation that occurs uh in property tax, now at the same time, the millage rate goes down. And you'll note uh that the millage rates that are proposed, with the exception of the general fund rate of three point nine mils. Because the board levies that well under uh what you would be allowed to uh under headly. Uh, that basically those of all the millage rates have actually gone down slightly. Uh, and with the exception of the general fund millage. Uh, in some total, Ottawa County remains, out of Michigan's eighty-three counties, uh, the fifth lowest property tax levy. And uh by far the largest county to levy that uh few mils. Uh, so I think that the 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 next largest Ottawa that would be in that uh top five or bottom five, depending how you want to look at it. Uh, would be Livingston County, and they're substantially smaller than Ottawa, so. Uh, bottom line is, I think the board has worked hard to keep uh tax rates low. And we continue in that tradition, even though every year we need to explain why this language. Uh, is on the agenda, because if you just read it casually, you would assume uh that the county is uh increasing taxes when. In essence, the millage rate is going down, but we are able to capture more of the increase in value. Which helps us pay for services, which certainly don't get cheaper every year.
Thank you, Al. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Roger, Roger, I'm gonna mention uh nine-one-one a minute, a minute. Um, a lot of us signed up for smart nine-one-one, so that information is in there when you call nine-one-one. I found out that if you don't update it on a regular basis, it's not in there anymore. My address changed in Zeeland, I called from my cellphone, she didn't know where I was calling from. That's not in there, she just got my phone, so I I'd think it would uh make smart for some of us if we do use the smart I. Nine-one-one that we updated on a regular basis, I thought she told me every six months we should update it, so. Maybe, maybe that's not right, Steve, you can help us.
That might be good for um Shannon to um post on our website at some point in time.
Certainly.
Frank, you were going to say something?
Yes, question for Al, uh, on on the actual uh language of the resolution on on the first page, uh, the last three uh where it says, uh, talks about MERS. Uh, is is there a purpose why we include the inverse language in this, seeing that it's not part of the increase that we're looking at?
Karen, Karen's here and she'll explain that one.
Okay.
That that point three mils that the board committed to funding the underfunded liability is included in the in this language so. That that those funds remain committed, uh, we started this last year when we raised the tax rate from three point six to three point nine. And it was based on fifteen years, the change is that it's still point three mils committed to that, but it's fourteen years. Just continuing that language.
So we're not increasing it at this point?
No, no, it's not an additional increase.
Okay, so down at the uh, on the last page of that, under number one. With the last sentence says, which includes an additional millage rate of point two-two-two-four, can you explain that, you know, what that part means?
So that is uh what Al had mentioned earlier, that is the um, the way that the state calculates it. They're advertising it as an additional millage because if you didn't have the hearing and didn't advertise a truth in taxation, your millage rate would actually have to decrease more.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Justin, would you call the roll please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Zalestra.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. De Young.
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next thing is appointments, we have non-discussion items, non-reported, the county administrator.
We we did have the two additional items, Mr. Chair, uh, so first up would be extension of the declaration of a local state of emergency resolution. Then the second one was a status report and suggestions on uh sending the letter from the board uh to the governor via you, the chair.
Okay, so there would be under action items, so there would be um four and five?
Yes.
Okay, and. Do we want uh Greg to present those?
Well, the first one would be the uh extension of the declaration of this action.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to approve and authorize the board chairman and clerk registered to sign a resolution to extend the state of emergency within Ottawa County due to COVID nineteen pandemic.
It's been supported and and uh moved and supported, comments or questions? Justin, would you call the roll please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowman.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Mepelink.
Yes.
Mr. Holt floor.
Yes.
Mr. De Young.
Yes.
Mr. Zylestra.
Yes.
Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Kyers.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. De Young, would you take the next one too, please?
Mr. Chair, I don't think that's a a motion, it's just a letter.
It would be just to ask for a motion to authorize the chair to send that letter to the governor on behalf of the board of commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to send uh the status report suggestions from COVID nineteen from Ottawa County. Onto the uh, from the board, onto the governor of the state of Michigan.
Or. Support for that? Comments or questions?
You know, I read the letter, I wonder if someone is able to just give a brief uh, you know, a summary of it, so the audience knows what we're including in there.
And maybe Doug, would you mind uh taking that?
Sure.
Our attorney, Doug?
Doug Vanessen here, um, yes, I was asked uh to draft a letter for the board's consideration today. That would essentially request the governor uh in the most constructive terms possible. To um not extend the safer-at-home. Uh, order beyond uh the June twelfth date extension. And the reasons that we cite in the letter are primarily that um. We believe there are adequate safety measures that the public is used to using now in Ottawa County. We recognize that until there's a vaccine or an effective treatment for COVID nineteen, we're gonna have to live uh with the. Uh, infection and and so while it's um necessary to. You know, use masks and social distance during this period of time, it's also important for our community. To get back to uh as normal in our activities as possible. Including in particular, the tourism and um restaurant activities that are an important part of Ottawa County life. We simply, it's time to do that, the other thing that we've noted here is that. Restaurants, um, and frankly, Ottawa County government needs to have a fixed date. Uh, we were intending to open June first, believing that May twenty-eighth was gonna be the end of this safer-at-home order. We were starting to gear up for that and then Friday she extended that. Obviously, restaurants uh need to hire, they need to order food, and it's very difficult for business to plan. If we don't get a fixed date where we can go back into business with some safety precautions in place. So we're indicating that we're not complaining, we're uh a partner with her. We've extended now our opening date to June twelfth, but we need to open and we need to get going on that. And that's the essence of the letter is is suggesting that it's time that government trust. The citizens to use these precautions, if we don't do that, frankly, we're gonna lose credibility. With this process and that's more damaging, uh, because if the public loses faith and confidence in what we're doing. Then unfortunately, they may not adhere to some of the safety precautions that the governor and uh health department, our health department included, is recommending. So there's a balance that has to be struck and that's what we're trying to suggest to the governor that it's time for the next level.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank, I would like to thank our legal counsel and 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 our chairperson of putting this together. This is important, I believe, to show the residents of Ottawa County that we are listening and we're trying as a county board to the very best we can to get. Businesses opened and campgrounds opened and and people back on track, so thank you for this letter, I I think it's a good letter, I think it's important, again. It shows the people that their board can make a difference.
Okay, Doug?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that, uh, this came to us a little bit late to do a full review and, you know, while I don't fully agree with all the points raised in number one and two, I do think that the final point that Doug makes that. You know, trends follow, that this should probably be the last order and uh I think that makes sense, I'll be voting yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
The weekend, uh, I received uh multiple emails uh from uh folks that run private campgrounds and. Um, these campgrounds are uh private and they have the ability to allow seasonal, so someone that has. Motor coach that parks there for three, four months are able to um take advantage presently, but those folks that want to come there for maybe two or three days or for a week. Uh, just like perhaps uh some cottages that are um not seasonal also, um, they're restricted and so. You know, there's a lot of different ways that we can uh as a board support um our constituents and I think that this is one way that uh. Uh, we can uh speak out and at least let it be known that uh we think that our constituents can be safe and practice proper. Cleansing and and keeping a social distance, uh, but it it's uh definitely time that uh. We need to open up uh and have those individuals that have businesses uh still be able to survive, they've got an awful, awful small window. Uh, just a couple, two, three months to uh survive on in many of these uh operations, so I'm definitely in support of uh this letter being sent.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else?
I guess I would like, um, Roger, I mean Chairman Bergman. I would like our next commission meeting to be in here with all the commissioners. I know that's before the June twelve, but that's be, I think it's June nine is our next meeting. And I would like to see, I'm gonna set the bar high, I would like to see the last meeting of June in the chamber. And I think we gotta start getting back to normal instead of being running skirt on this stuff, I think with us washing hands. Uh, not touching your face, keeping a little bit of distance, not shaking hands and everything, I think we can get through this just fine. But now that's my opinion on this and I'm gonna set the bar on that one, so.
I I would voice agreement with Al on that. I like that, I like that idea, I think it's time.
You know, I guess I would like to say that that I would like to rely on uh on our health department's uh. Recommendations as well as as considered, you know, the work that the staff has to do in order to prepare for a meeting like this uh at a time like this. So if it's going to involve more time and more cost, uh, I I I guess I uh I would have some concerns about that. If our health, uh, you know, department, who we who we should be listening to, still has concerns, uh. I'm also, as a former teacher, I believe in setting the proper example, uh, in, especially in cases like this. So that's my two cents on that one.
Doug, go ahead, Doug.
Uh, I I I don't know if I can make a direct question to the commissioner, but what would be the motivation to necessarily go to the next meeting? Um, I mean, as, you know, Michigan and Ottawa opens up, we're all gonna be doing more traveling, I will be doing more traveling for my business. Um, I, you know, um, hopefully remain safe and healthy, but, you know, I also wouldn't want to put you all at risk. Uh, so just kind of getting at some of the motivations for why we would necessarily need to do it. I personally have found these Zoom sessions to be good, um, I, especially the folks who are present on Zoom side. It's a good conversation, I think the last two or three meetings have been, you know, solid conversations with staff. Um, I don't see the detriment to it, as long as we can keep doing it, I'm in favor of keeping doing it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I can I concur with Al, I I think that as leaders, you know, um, and as we're opening up the county buildings to. To staff and and to guests again, I think it's time to come together and again, um, use common sense and use respect and.
use common sense and use respect and don't, don't yawn on somebody or cough on somebody or shake somebody's hand. We can keep our distance and be very respectful, but I think it's time to show leadership to come back together.
An additional comment, Roger. You notice that the only person in that room right now wearing a mask is actually, you know, Justin. And that's because there's five of us not there at this point, or six of us not there, including some other staff members. So as more staff members come on board and more board members attend, you know, I think that we're walking closer and closer to not following proper health procedures. So I actually am not opposed to continuing with this process.
And I'm going to interject something here just a moment, too, because the concern that I have is that I, I represent five municipalities, Northwest Ottawa County, and I know four of them are all meeting on Zoom. And as a representative of the county Board of Commissioners, and we represent the Health Department of Ottawa County. To us, and to an extent, we do. And for them to be meeting in Zoom to keep themselves safe and for me to be meeting with you all in a, in a setting, you know, without masks, and I'm not saying we need to have masks on, but, but I, I'm, I, I agree with Frank and, and and with Doug that I, I think there is value in showing an example of leadership in the county. I don't know how Jim feels. He hasn't said anything, but.
I'm next. I'm next.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. I agree that we have to follow the guidance of our health department and the governor first. That's what our job is. We're voted not to be independent, but to follow, and that's what we have to do. Those of us that are over sixty, haha, we have, we have to really guard against this stuff. I have not left my house in two months. That's what I have not done. And if we're going to meet together, I think we all need to wear face masks. And we also, at this point, I don't believe we can meet closer to the date of the twenty eighth than what the governor has set. My opinion.
So there we have it. Now we'll go on to the report of the county administrator.
We did not vote on the.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
We do have a motion and support, so.
Yes. Will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Turpstra.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
I'm sorry. What's going on here?
This is the letter, Doug.
Oh, we're still on the letter, okay.
The letter. We kind of, we kind of segue. Go ahead.
All right. So we have Mr. Turpstra, Mr. Holflor.
Yes.
Mr. Zialstra. Was that a yes?
Yes, that was yes.
Okay. And Mr. Keirz.
Yes.
Mr. DeYoung.
Yes.
Mr. Meplink.
Yes.
Mr. Baumann.
Yes.
Mr. Fenske.
Yes.
Mr. Danenberg.
Yes.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Baumann, just a quick question for our legal counsel. If the governor stops with her stay at home order as of the twelfth, Zoom meetings will no longer be legal, correct?
No, you know, in my opinion, we, we can have a Zoom, and we're having a Zoom meeting, a blended meeting under the Open Meetings Act as it's currently written. I have had.
Excuse me, Doug. Excuse me, Doug.
Did you not hear me?
Yeah, when, when you guys speak, you need to speak straight into the microphone because
I apologize.
Otherwise, we can't hear what you're saying. If you look at the people there, then you're not speaking into the microphone. So please start over. Thanks.
Yes, we have not been conducting these meetings under the governor's emergency order authorizing all Zoom meetings. Instead, we've been following my earlier opinion, which is also MTA's opinion, the Township Association's lawyer, that the Open Meetings Act as presently written allows remote participation if the board approves it. So we have had Al approved, using his emergency powers, this blended meeting concept. And I don't know if we've held the board, the doors open for a public comment here today, or we're just allowing it by Zoom, but you can have that remote participation on an ongoing basis. And many of the UP authorities, mental health authorities, have been doing this, not by Zoom, but by telegraphic or video participation for years. I've had one client do it for twenty years. Because winters are so bad, they don't want to travel in winter. So we can do it. Thank you.
I will point out, just, you know, I got an email from Stephanie about our mileage reports, and, you know, I didn't have any mileage last month. So, you know, times eleven commissioners, that does save the county some money as well, so.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to Al finally, right?
All right. Just a couple items for you today. A couple weeks ago, we did have, and I'm not sure how many caught it, so I wanted to bring it up today and give it special mention, but the, the dispatch authority sent out a press release indicating that they have successfully completed the eight hundred megahertz project. And that's really significant because it was a very hard process. It was hard to get it approved. Because we're the first in West Michigan to join the state system, we did end up getting about a thirteen million dollar price break in getting that done. And then I think all the counties around us, with maybe the exception of Muskegon, have joined in since that time. And so it's a huge accomplishment to, to make that happen. And so I just want to congratulate the dispatch board on, on making that happen and really bringing us into the twenty first century in a big way. The COVID team continues to meet. Typically, it's on Mondays. We're meeting tomorrow. We've had a smaller group that's been working on the reopening plan, and we've put out two versions of that so far. My guess is that we will delay reopening the county facilities until probably June fifteen. The governor's order goes through June twelve. And that's a Thursday, of course. So the open for one day, we'll probably make it a Monday. That will do a couple of things for us. For one thing, facilities has not completed setting up the Plexiglas shields where they need to be installed. And so that will give us more time to get the facilities ready, to have most of our employees back and also the general public back. In addition, at this time, we're still doing a lot of business over my Ottawa. We're still doing mandated services by appointment. And so with the exception of the complete stoppage that's happened with some of the court functions, such as trials, I think that much of our county business is still progressing. So it's not like we built up a huge, huge, huge backlog. I mean, I think we'll see a little bit of a pickup when we open up physically again. So I think that, and, and we're not necessarily tying this to the governor's action because I do believe the county government provides essential critical functions. And I think that when the time comes in a couple of weeks, I, it has been noted with so many others returning to work on a partial basis and all that sort of thing, that it will be our time to do so, unless there's some huge second wave that hits or something that we're not foreseeing. Other than that, county processes continue. You know, at this point, we're about, last I knew, about eight hundred thousand dollars short in revenue in the general fund. However, some of that will be caught up as court functions pick up again. Where our expenditures are also down as departments have delayed certain things, certain activities such as conferences that pass by without attendance because they've been canceled. And so I think that when it all shakes out, the big question will be what happens with our state revenue. We've received six of eight revenue sharing payments so far in this fiscal year. So we're that, you know, we have two left. Our estimates right now, based on what we know, is that we could get half payments for both of those. But I think that overall, we're not sitting poorly and certainly within the confines of to resolve without major layoffs or anything like that. The key will be what happens, I think, as the state moves closer to adopting their budget for the next fiscal year. And what does that do with our revenue? And then what does that cause our reaction to be as we work on completing our budget? Just a couple of things to think about as you struggle with how to do the meetings in the future. I think that, you know, I've challenged staff with, you know, is there a way we can make this room work with the technology so that we could have the entire board socially distanced and do a Zoom meeting as well? And I think the limits of the room and the technology are such that we have not been able to do that, not anticipating we're going to be able to do that anytime soon. But this room and the boardroom are both set up to be able to do live streaming, which is in essence what we're doing right now. And we would recommend that we continue that practice. But some things to think about, I guess, are, I, I kind of agree with the comments that we should at least consider the guidance to the Health Department, because if they are recommending social distancing of six feet and then, or, or whatever those recommendations might be, as, as a leadership position, I think it might be tough just to discard the Health Department recommendations. But I think that's something you'll have to struggle through as you get closer to a decision on that. Because it does model for the rest of the county, I think, you know, whether we take our own Health Department seriously, how we act as far as how, what those recommendations are. Other than that, just kudos to just a lot of fantastic people in Ottawa County. Our Health Department, our Emergency Management Division, our Sheriff's Office, just the huge amounts of volunteers that have turned out to help with a lot of the flooding issues. One of the reasons Ottawa County is a fantastic place is just the selfless sacrifice that so many people make to help out other people and to make this a great place. And it's really heartening to see how people pull together here. And so just very thankful for that today. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I gotta, I gotta ask one question. Okay, right now, we are set up to allow six of us commissioners in here. And I think there's seven of us that want to meet in here and the other four on Zoom. So why couldn't we make it steadfast so John doesn't have to say the email so we can quick get on this thing before we lose our spot on this? Why can't we accept the seven that want to be here and leave it at that? Because right now in this room, while we did have, we had eighteen people in this room. So we weren't following the Health Department's guidelines anyway. That was ten people. So why can't we add one more?
Well, I think that that's the issue right there, that already we're not following the guidelines.
Amen. Okay. Any other general information, comments, or meeting attendants?
I'd like to make one comment. I'm pretty sure if you look in our policies, that commissioners do have to attend seventy-five percent of the meetings if they're elected. I mean, we got to watch the road we go down here that we don't have some commissioner spend six months in Florida on their Zoom just because they want to. So I think as it goes through and we get through this COVID thing, I think we should bring this back to plan and policy and figure out what we got to do with this. Just my comment.
I have an affidavit that I'm sitting in my home right now if I have to.
Here, I got a comment, too, that just like Al said, if, just allow the people that want to be here to be here. And if you feel safe to be here, be here. And if you don't feel safe, do it via Zoom.
Good point.
Any other comments? All right, is there any public comments? Justin?
I don't believe so, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.